Planning, we'll call us a planning board for, there is it, June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four? Well, alphabetical roll call, who's here? On me, Tom Callahan, I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin Hein, I.
And our new associate is out there, and we just need to get her promoted. We've tried to get everybody to come in a little earlier. We'll see who shows up. I don't want to keep this here till seven thirty, but we may have giant gaps of time, so. Oh, here she comes.
Now, here she is, right? Okay, hold it, can you, and now we need to get the video as well. Yay!
There you go.
Okay, here we go.
Welcome, welcome.
Yes, we're good, wel- welcome. Thank you for stepping up to do this. I'm glad you're here tonight. We did think a couple of hours ago, we were going to need you for a quorum. You're going to get to vote on your first night. You know, just so you know, you'll participate in these meetings, just like anybody else. Kevin can fill you in, Kevin did the associate thing for a while.
An elected official, woo woo!
Yeah. So, you know, we go around and rotate and who has, you know, questions, comments, or just like anybody else. The votes, though, you'll only get to have an official vote when we need a quorum, or somebody is, somebody is absent, so.
Okay.
You also have Deirdre here tonight.
She's here, too.
It is a much fuller house than we anticipated.
Wow!
Ms. Hobson.
So, I, I don't know if you want to wait for Clark for the reorganization.
Well.
I'll leave that up to you.
We, we can discuss it, I don't, I don't care, I.
So I have my hand up already about that issue?
Well, then, I'll probably ignore you for the next two hours.
I would recommend that, in the unusual circumstance that we all find ourselves, which includes a senior member of the planning board being absent as a result of a family tragedy, that we postpone the designation of the chairmanship or the transformation of the leadership in the board, and allow Mr. Callahan to operate as he has previously for the last year. And I make that as a motion.
No, that's fine, we don't need a motion, we can wait for Clark.
We already know that Mr. Brewer has indicated that he is not going to attend because of his family tragedy.
I know, I'm aware of that, so we can put off discussing this till our next meeting. Right now, we have nothing scheduled in July, but I think after tonight, we will have something scheduled in July, so. But you all know what my position is, I just want to see this out for the zoning. And that, and that should be done in the fall, the last go-around will be in the fall. And whether I, whether I stay on in my term, much less, I certainly don't want to be chair after the fall town meeting. Whether I even stay on the board till next June is another story entirely, I haven't made that decision yet. There's a good chance I won't.
So I would like to make a comment, which is that has Ms. Schmidt, wish, how, how do we say the second part of your last name?
Um, you would pronounce all of the letters, so, Vesta, um, so Schmidt Vesta.
Schmidt Vesta.
That, oh, all right, thank you, have you?
Didn't you take, didn't you take German in high school? Come on, I thought everybody did.
No, French, what can I say? Could I ask, have you been given a sufficient understanding of how these mediums, these meetings work? Or would you like to have either Mr. Callahan or Ms. Thayer give you further explanation for how our meetings go in general?
Um, I, I did meet with Cassandra, um, say, um, we had a general introductory talk. And I have been following a couple of your previous meetings, so, just for the mere procedure, right? But in general, I would, you know, definitely need more information to feel comfortable, yeah.
Well, you'll, you'll, you'll get a little taste tonight, since we have two things, I mean, there's some proceedings we do that are somewhat informal, there are some that are formal, public hearings, a notice has to be read, they have to notify the butters, and, you know, in the usual course of things, we hear from the applicant first. If we have a peer reviewer, an expert on our side, we hear from them. Then I'll go through board comments, and sometimes I just do straight alphabeticals, sometimes I just start with somebody to mix it up. And then we hear from the public. And, you know, hopefully, no one matters inordinate amount of a time, but. You know, it's very frequent that we'll have to continue things from one meeting to the next, and then if you miss one meeting, there's, there's a whole process of, even if you miss a meeting, you can still participate in a vote by doing some certain things, but of course, that region. You know, it's just, it, it needs to be in order, particularly with Zoom, it's a little different when we meet live, not to talk over each other and just go in order, so, you know, and the formality is to direct comments to the chair, not to other people, I, sometime, you know, if you want to ask, you know, an applicant a direct question, or their attorney or their engineer a direct question, I don't have a problem with that. So, anyway, I see, I did see Deirdre stand up, and now I see Carolyn.
Please, I, I, let Ms. Murray speak first, as our.
I am going to, I just said that.
Okay. Thank you, so just two things, one, I think we should call the meeting to orders, and so we're starting to have conversation about what direction the meeting should take this evening. The, the other thing I was just going to say with respect to our newest members, I can pull out the training materials that I did when I think Kevin and Deirdre first joined the board and, and share that, and I'd certainly be happy to go through some of that, you know, one-on-one with, with, with you, if that would be helpful.
Okay, yeah, why don't you do that? I, I, I don't know if you were on the line, but I did call the meeting and take the wrong call, so we're, we're official, I think, at this point. So we anticipated that, you know, in the agenda, that this discussion was going to be a lot longer, it's not going to be, so. We did send out emails to try to move everybody up, the two matters up tonight, but we'll see.
Brendan is here.
Brendan is here, I will, let's get out, we have three sets of minutes for what, May?
May fifteenth, May.
May fifteen, May twenty-sixth, and June fifth, twenty twenty-four, can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Second, I would, I'll put forth a motion to approve the minutes.
Somebody else want a second?
Second.
Generally, the chair doesn't, I try not to make the motions in second, but it doesn't, it really doesn't matter, but. All right, so all in favor of the motion to approve those three sets of minutes? Alphabetical roll call, Tom Callahan, I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin Hein, I.
Ms. Hobson?
Deirdre? That's right, we, we have the, we have enough for it. With the Zoom, we have to do all of this more formally. Stating our name and, you know, whether I or nay on a vote, so, that's our formality. All right, if Brendan's here, let's bring him forward, this is going to start then with the A and R for Crocker Lane.
And, Tom, Mr. Callahan, on the basis of the fact that we have a new member of our board, could you please describe in each instance what activity we're doing and how does it work?
Okay, it's a good thing Carolyn's here to back me up on these descriptions. This first matter we have today, that, there's, in addition to the zoning bylaws, we also are the board that applies and enforces the subdivision, the state subdivision control law. And we also have a separate section in the zoning bylaw and the town bylaws that deals with subdivisions. This is a particular type of subdivision that's called A and R or approval not required. And it means that it's a particular type of subdivision of a lot, usually just one lot into two, sometimes it can be more. That doesn't require going through the very formal subdivision, long-drawn-out subdivision process. There's certain statutory criteria that have to be met, but as long as those are met, we can either approve and give our approval, or we can deny approval. It is not usually involved in building, it's not saying that the lot otherwise complies with zoning. It simply meets the limited criteria for an A and R endorsement, and that usually just means that there's adequate frontage on a public, public way. So, this is a very simple process, but we see a lot of them. It's very common for people to take larger lots in town and start to subdivide them. And if they do want to build on what they have now created, a new lot they've created, they'll have to go through all the process, in no way is it approving any buildings, it's not going past wetlands laws or requirements, septic systems, and any of that, it's just simply subdividing a lot in a much less formal way that state law allows for, so. We have that tonight for a lot upon Crocker Lane, which is the roadway that goes off three A to the old landfill and to Coacit Lumber. So I will turn it over to Brendan Sullivan, tell us who the applicant is, what, what it is you're doing.
Sure, thank you, great explanation, by the way, Tom, another good resource, maybe the, there's a A and R handbook, which is a, a great reference, has plenty of examples in there, and explains the A and R process, front to back. But this is a, so the, the plan, I was going to put up the other plan. Messing up, putting up on the screen for me, anyhow, so, there was a form, A and R plan approved by the, the board back in two thousand twenty-one, which created all of these lots, one of them being parcel lot three, which is now we're, we're subdividing into parcel D and parcel E. If you want to orientate yourself, this is Crocker Lane that comes up to the sports center. The sports facility's here, the soccer field's out in front, the landfill is up over here, over on the left-hand, left-hand side. So this parcel E and parcel D was part of, was, was originally lot three. And so the idea is Hingham Lumber owns this property down here, so Hingham Lumber is going to purchase parcel A, parcel D.
We can't see anything.
You can't see anything?
It says Brendan Sullivan has started screen sharing, but that's all I see.
Yeah, I'm not seeing anything either, Brendan. Oh, sorry about that. Let me try that again. I'm working out of the library tonight, that's why, I don't know why this is not giving me a headache here.
Cassandra, do you want to pull it up out of our, you know, the file that's online on the planning board page?
I was going to say, typically, I mean, I'll do my best to point out what you're saying, Brendan, but.
Sorry.
I looked at, I looked at this plan about an hour and a half, it's, it's there, oh, there it is.
Okay. So this isn't, this is the first one, so this is one that was approved in twenty twenty-one. So here's the sports center, the soccer field in front, there's Crocker Lane. This lot was lot three, is the lot we're subdividing, this long skinny lot here. So Hingham Lumber owns this property here, and eventually Hingham Lumber is going to per, is going to purchase parcel A. This other parcel we're creating and land over in this area here, all owned currently by Crocker Realty. Let me see if I can get the other plan, so this is the original plan that's been, you know, it's been approved by you guys, it's been recorded in Plan Book seven thirteen, page eighty-four in the Norfolk Registry of Deeds. So what the new plan is going to do is basically just subdivide lot three into two smaller parcels, because Crocker Two wanted to keep the, this smaller leg that goes to the landfill and give this other larger piece to Hingham Lumber, to develop something behind, like, some additional storage behind Hingham Lumber. And I lost my, I lost my other, my other plan.
With that question, with that explanation, Carolyn, correct me if I'm wrong, but just because this will be added to Hingham Lumber's land isn't going to bring it into the new MBTA overlay. The Hingham Lumber property is in the overlay, I'm pretty sure. Yeah, I think it is. But just adding this isn't going to extend the district unless we affirmatively extend the district, correct?
Mr. Callahan, can you ask our planning director her perspective on this particular question?
If it would be incorporated into the MBTA district?
That's correct.
No, it wouldn't be.
It would not be.
Just because it's common ownership doesn't change the boundary lines of a district, so. It'll be outside of it. Okay, and Carolyn, can we approve this with the new, the small little lot not having any frontage?
You can, Mr. Chair, but I would recommend that since neither of these lots has frontage on their own, or zoning compliant frontage on their own, and as I understand it, they're just being created for the purpose of, as, as Brendan was saying, Crocker Two to hold on to one portion of it, and another parcel just to be conveyed to Hingham Lumber, I would suggest that we put a notation on the plan that indicates, you know, that, that the, the parcels are simply to be conveyed and they're not available by themselves as building lots, or, or something to that effect.
So maybe a label that the building lots are, are not buildable in and of themselves?
Right, but are to be, you know, exactly, I mean, like, these two, that's the only way you can endorse it, otherwise, you'd have to go through the subdivision process.
Okay, I mean, I'd be more than happy to add that note to the plan prior to endorsement. I know you usually can't condition an A and R plan, but I'd be happy to make that note before it's endorsed.
This is one of those exceptions of the types of notes that are allowed.
So as a member of the planning board, do we need to treat this in any way as an exception? Does it have any other implications?
No, I think they're just creating lots to convey a parcel, that's all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so anybody else on the board have any questions? Forget, if you have any questions, even as to what is actually being done, feel free, there's no such thing as a bad question, so.
Yeah, thank you.
So again, this is something that, you know, we, we subdivided it by this process in twenty twenty-three to create the current configuration, but everything that we created then had frontage either on three A or Crocker Lane. This particular subdivision is taking off this little chunk nearest the old landfill, and that has frontage on nothing, so that's why, yes, Carolyn, we can do the qualification, but so. I would, if, if nobody has anything, I'd make a.
I, I do, Mr. Callahan, given, given that we are doing this, and we haven't done it before, do we have any implications associated with our actions at this point?
Like what? What are you concerned about?
Well, for example, somebody could, could come back with a condition, a, a situation which has ambiguity, and they could reference this as an action that we've taken that is not a, a conventional application of our responsibility. I just want to make sure we bucket it to the point where it is not something that will come back to bite us.
I believe we've endorsed A and Rs before with the notation that we're not creating buildable lots, it's possible to do that, so. I think if we, you know, we're qualifying our endorsement, our endorsement is conditional on the statement we just talked about, that these will not be buildable, and they're just part of, this is being done as part of a landfill, so.
And, and if I may also, Mr. Chair, the plan already has a note on it that says that this is not any indication of compliance with zoning either. So we're not representing that these lots are separately buildable, we're not representing that they have zoning compliant frontage. I think coupling that with the, the suggestion for the notation that I made, that these are, parcels are being created for conveyance purposes and cannot be used as the site, it's not a buildable lot on its own, I think that that covers, you know, any concerns that folks might have. Even if we said something, you know, lots are to be combined with, conveyed and combined with adjacent lots, something to that effect. I think we cover all the contingencies.
Thank you.
All right, well, with, with that said, unless anybody has something else, I'll, I'll craft a motion as that we endorse this A and R plan, subject to notation being made on the plan that this division is being made for purposes of conveyance to adjoining lots, and that it is not creating is, is not allowing these lots to be independently buildable on their own, like, something to that effect, Brendan, you can word something to that effect. All right, so we, we can approve, give the endorsement tonight with that condition, and what, you know, but obviously, when we need to see the plan with sign, we all have to take a look at the language you've crafted, if you, if you want to shoot it to everybody by email ahead of time, before you put it on the MyLar, feel free to do that.
Okay, sure, no problem.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, any other discussion? If not, alphabetical roll call, Tom Callahan, I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin Hein, I.
Okay, that's, that's it, we, we have our quorum with those three. Deirdre was having communication problems with Vermont, that's where she is at the moment, so. She won't be joining us for the rest of the evening, all right, Brendan, just get that to us as soon as you can.
Great, thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, thanks for coming a little earlier.
No problem.
All right. Anyway. You know, so the A and R handbook, that's something to read, that's something the state puts out, that explains the process we just went through. The rest of what we do is various provisions of the bylaw, the bylaw is going, undergoing a lot of change right now. We did get an announcement from the town clerk that the E three sixty people, that's the company that compiles the bylaw and puts it online for us, has updated everything through the fall twenty-three town meeting. I only hope they got the part of, we have to check this, Carolyn, the part of Article Four that did not get approved by the Attorney General, the part about the charging stations. Hope that didn't slip in by mistake. That's good, that saved me a lot of work, because of what I was going to do, just for handiness, and since, those of us who have the bylaw in print and a binder, it's horribly out of date now, I was going to create an unofficial Word version of everything we've changed up through this past town meeting. What we just passed won't be approved probably until fall, you know, probably around the same time as our fall town meeting. And Cassandra and I have talked a bit about getting the zoning map updated, since we have eliminated districts, consolidated districts, we have created the new overlay for MBTA law. One of the things I mentioned that is not on our current zoning map, we don't have little crosshatching for the floodplain or the watershed overlays. I think the Citrat map does, now, the crosshatching can get out of hand, but you know, we, I think we should try to show that on the map itself, if we can, I know Citrats does, but ours, ours has never done that, so.
The town clerk actually made a suggestion earlier that if we were to show or wanted to show the crosshatching for some of the overlay districts that aren't presently shown, but we didn't want the map to get too busy, we could do a, like a secondary map that just has the crosshatching on it, without, like, say, other crosshatching, that way it's evident that, yes, this is where it is, it can happen, it's like an attachment.
Yeah. On the current map, we only showed, the only overlay we actually showed on the current map was the one in the harbor that we've now eliminated. You know, the main map, I think we should show the MBTA one, and then maybe a secondary map, show the floodplain and the watershed, and whatever the other one is, the solar, overground, well, solar. Only because what could get confusing on the map is I, I think there's places where the floodplain and the watershed runs over lack of each other, so. We might have to do that, that might be easier to do as a separate map, which is shading, you know, where they overlap, then it would be kind of mixed. So hopefully that map, you know, we, we have an IT guy in town, we don't have an engineer, but it's something we can sub out and get done, so hopefully we'll get that done. There, there won't be any other changes to districts coming up, so. Unless somebody comes up with a completely new initiative about climate change, but so the map that we created through this last town meeting will be good for us for a while, so. Anyway, anything else anybody would like to discuss? We're just waiting for Mr. Orman for twenty-six line to line, but hopefully he'll come a little earlier.
Yeah, I, I do have a quick question, so you said you are revamping the, the bylaws. Is there also any room for, you know, maybe adding something, or, you know, kind of changing things? Meaning, you know, kind of, I am particular, am, you know, kind of, very interested in getting a clear understanding of how much and how many, you know, kind of ledges, you know, kind of can be removed. And I had asked, you know, kind of Cassandra about, you know, getting the information where it is explained, and it's not very clear to me, you know, kind of, what exactly can be, you know, kind of removed, and, and what's the extent of what can be removed, and, yeah.
All right, well, let me, I'll, I'll give you the brief history of it, it first came up as an idea to protect ledge back in the mid-two thousands, and in particular, it was driven by a project on Beach Street where somebody was blasting a driveway up the side of the ledge, and that driveway exists today. It wasn't until a citizen petition in two thousand seventeen that I was part of, started to bring the matter to the forefront. It got a majority vote, failed for a two-thirds vote, which you need for a zoning bylaw, by six votes. The next year, it was retooled, and some compromises were made from the original draft in order to get over that six-boat hump and get it passed. In a nutshell, and, and so now there is a process, a special permit process with this board when ledge is going to be removed, but since the bylaw has been in effect, I can probably count on one hand how many times we've actually had to apply it. So in a nutshell, it only deals with ledge that you can see on the surface, because that's the visual, the, the unique visual characteristic of a coacid is its ledge, and that's to protect what we can see, not necessarily what's underground and we can't see. There is an exception for taking out visible ledge and obviously underground ledge to build the primary structure, and I also believe to build garages. I will tell you that I want to revisit it. I have drafted some changes, not exactly the original citizen's petition from two thousand seventeen. Uh, I have drafted some changes, not exactly the original citizens petition from two thousand seventeen, but maybe closing a few loopholes like accessory buildings. I think we're still, you know, if if we prohibit removal of ledge with a primary structure, that could be problematic and it probably, probably the amendment wouldn't pass because you know, I, I, I read class at one four three. I know there's a lot of people concerned with blasting lately. Apparently there's a lot of projects where blasting is happening. Particularly up, um, the northwest end of town. Northeast, whatever it is. Um. You know, and, but, but those are the kinds of marginal lots we have left. There is a reason why these lots with a lot of ledge didn't get built down along time. Um, in areas where there's now sewer, it's much easier to build on ledge when you don't have to put a septic system in it, so. We, we can look at it, um, again, I, I, I'd like to think about some changes to it. But again, it hasn't been super problematic for us because we, I can count the permits we've had on one hand. And there was one on the property, the Actors Row property across from the Art Club. And one of the things we did there was follow a principle that was similar to what we do at wetlands. Is that if you were going to fill a wetland, you're going to be permitted to do it, you have to create a new wetland somewhere else on the property. And on that particular project, we applied that same principle where they covered up some ledge or I believe it was a pool house, maybe their garage. They just exposed ledge that was just underneath the surface in another spot. So they created the visual effect somewhere else. Call it ledge replication and we call it wetlands replication or any other thing, but you know, that's an approach and a tool that I actually wanted to memorialize in the bylaw rather than just having it as a policy or tool, but, uh. So that is on tap as a possible, so, you know, looking ahead, memo I sent around to the select board, I think this board. Um, you know, there's probably another, as many as seven articles. We had seven at this past town meeting and that will finish it. That will finish the reorganization where we will have touched every portion of the bylaw. And this could be one of them. You know, we could either leave it as it is. And again, it, it's major part of it today is that it you were allowed to remove surface ledge to build the house and the accessory structures like the garage. Um, everywhere else you got to get a permit. And in the permit, we in one place we applied it, we did this trade off. If you've been, if you're going to take away ledge and we let you take away that ledge, see if you can expose some new ledge somewhere else, um. So, um.
That does not apply to the main, main building to.
No, no, and, and, you know, we, we, we can get into whether we would be able to even do that, you know, it gets into takings law, regulatory takings law, I think, and we were if we had a bylaw that prevented all building on lands with exposed ledge, I, we might run into a problem, so. Um, you know, and then the blasting laws themselves are somewhere else, they're, they're in the general bylaws and that comes under the jurisdiction of the fire department. Um, you know, we, we did have an issue with the property that's coming up to us tonight with blasting that was getting ready to begin before it had the proper permits in place, but. So, the you know, so what, what's on, you know, to, what's on tap, just so you know, the remainder is tweaks to the wind bylaw, the solar bylaw. Hopefully we will have a new impact, development impact bylaw. We will have a tweak that M A P C is working on on our floodplain protection bylaw. And then we have to think about this ledge one. We have to think about our cluster development bylaw. And, and how it ties into frontage of lots. And then there's a proposal about house sizes that we'll, we'll debate. Um, the other thing is you all know my proposal, just because of what's happening with elections and participation, I'm going to propose for this last buyer go around just to get rid of the zoning bylaw committee and just, you know, just have this board um, review everything. We have to review. Regi, so you know, one of the formal roles of the planning board is that all zoning bylaws have to come before the planning board under the formal public hearing process before town meeting. For a, a recommendation one way or the other. Doesn't mean it doesn't go on the warrant, but the planning board gives a recommendation, pass it or not pass it. Um. So I'm, I'm looking and I, again, I'm trying to set up a meeting with the, that's more, the select board so I can just uh, go over this, these ideas. I don't know. So instead of the zoning bylaw committee being the sponsor of the bylaws, the planning board would be the sponsor of all, which is somebody would be the sponsor right now. The bylaw committee just, you know, wasn't functioning effectively and now with the election. You know, we have two select board members, two planning board members. One zoning board member and our at-large member doesn't participate and I'm not sure if she may formally resign, so. It's just as easy to, uh, to get rid of it and go over these things. They're all written. Just go over the things with, within this, it'll be a lot simpler, so. Um. Anyways, um. So it's important when we do other types of permits, special permits or site plan reviews uh, that everybody have the text of the bylaw readily available. If you want to sit there and use the online version, fine. Um. But I'm hoping to create a new written version, you know, paper version of it. And then, um. You know, we just, you have to just be careful about making decisions within the framework of the bylaw. Not going off of what you think should happen or would like to see happen. But what does the bylaw allow? What does the bylaw allow us to do to say no? Um, there are many of our processes where it's not a say no process. The large home review is one of them. It's not say no. We can condition it, but it's not a yes or no process. Site plan review, which is a process we apply to commercial properties on three A and will apply to any development in the MBTA district. Um, that's not a yes or no either. It's really just conditioning. Did you address traffic correctly? Did you address landscaping, some other things, but it's not a yes no process. Special permits are a yes no process. And again, if we're going to either add conditions to a project or we're going to say no to a project, we just have to have a good basis to do so from the bylaw. And if we find something is lacking, then we go to town meeting and try to amend it. But. I, I don't foresee any new issues arising unless, you know, tonight there's a meeting that CZM is having about their study of coacid coves. I don't know if any recommendations of bylaw changes is coming. I know they're talking about you know, new seawalls, raising the level of the streets around the cove. You know, I don't think those involve bylaw changes, but, uh, you know, unless there's some new initiatives on climate, climate resiliency and climate change, which probably wouldn't come until the earlier, until next Springstown meeting. Will be done this fall. I, I certainly will be done. I'm not hanging around for new stuff, so. Somebody can pick up the ball if there's any new stuff after that. Um. It's a shame that the CZM thing tonight is conflicting with our meeting, but I get, it is on Zoom, so I guess everybody can see it on tape afterwards, you know, if you'd like. I certainly am going to try to see it and see what they're coming up with. I did the little walking tour a couple of weeks ago and that's what they talked about is a new seawall in the cove and maybe raising Elm Street somewhat. They have a scary big stick about where the blood, blood levels could be in twenty fifty and twenty seventy if things go in a certain direction, so. Pretty, pretty intimidating, but, uh, it also is not cast in stone that that will happen. Yeah, Amy, go ahead.
Um, I think for the opportunity of others to be able to actually go to the talk you're just describing, can we move ourselves forward on the topics of tonight?
Well, we don't have the applicant here. So we have our, we have our expert and we have our applicant and I don't want to speak out of school while the applicant isn't in the room, so.
So, but, but, but didn't we, haven't we just adopted as a regular policy that the applicant should be in, in a sense waiting because we don't know how long we will finish on any one topic?
Yeah, I know that, but it was on the agenda that his time was going to be seven thirty and.
Okay, I just wanted to, to make sure.
He probably, he probably took that literally, even though we usually, you know, our pattern for your knowledge is to set everybody up for six thirty. And then on the printed agenda, we may set off times that, so for the public, they're not all, you know, if they're only here for some project, we kind of give them an approximate time that we might reach something, um.
So should we ask our planning director if she's heard a thing from?
She's emailed and she's reached out to him and our expert is here, Patrick Brennan on this project, so.
I did email him and everybody on his team, um, in the event that someone would, uh, check their email. Um. I did actually, I was having a conversation about this topic, um, just the agenda postings and times in general earlier. Um, Carolyn, are we required to give each applicant or application an agenda time or is the overall agenda time sufficient? Because this is something that we run into often.
You don't have to give a specific time or, you know, item on the agenda. Um, what you could do, what, what really matters at the end of the day is what did the public hearing notice say? That went out to everybody else. If it said six thirty. And we always put that statement on the agendas that says, you know, the times are approximate and things might be taken in a different order. Um, you know, if the public, if it was advertised for six thirty, we could be well underway right now. And my suggestion going forward would be advertise everything for six thirty, even if even if, you know, one or two things are going to be on the agenda and they might have to wait fifteen, twenty minutes. At least you don't have a situation like tonight where we're killing time for a half hour or so, but since we do have a little time, I also just wanted to point out Lambert's Lane is a special permit, so they need a super majority vote. Which, which, which would mean that our newest member, you know, Welcome would have to participate, um, in the decision. Um. Obviously, if, if this doesn't conclude tonight, either Clark or Deirdre could still review materials and certify that prior to the board making a decision. Um. But sometimes in this situation where you've only got four members present and the applicant is eager to get a decision. And, you know, the applicant might not want to go forward with only four members this evening.
Well, he, uh, just joined.
Okay.
So we could find out. Uh, Tom, would you like me to pull him forward?
Yeah, please.
Do you want me to pull, uh, Mr. Brennan forward as well?
Yes. All right, um.
Hello, I have to round up the crew a little bit early here. I'm going to send an email out right now.
All right. Uh, do we have a notice three, Cassandra?
Is a common driveway application that doesn't require a public hearing notice.
Uh, Regi, uh, just so you know, uh, Patrick Brennan is one of the experts the board retains on various projects. We use about two, three, four different companies for different projects at different times. Uh, under our town bylaws, the applicant pays for our expert. He's here to work for us and guide us and um, what we have here tonight is a common driveway application. This is for, uh, property on Lambert's Lane. Uh, it has previously received the approval, not required endorsement to be divided into four lots. A couple of years ago, there was a common driveway application. It was withdrawn. In the meantime, our bylaw on the common driveways has changed. Uh, it can serve now no more than four lots. It used to be eight. That's down to four. This was always only going to serve four, but, uh, so this, this is a new application for approval for a common driveway. Lots have been subdivided. He separately has had to get wetlands permits, uh, from the Conservation Commission. I have no idea what the status of those are and and then, uh, you know, then there's building permits and there probably will be a ledge removal permit that is going to be needed to go the ledge, so. That just gives you some background where we are, so, um. I don't know if we need your members, your team here, Mr. Orman. I mean, our biggest problem right now is that we didn't get information from you at the end of today, like five, five twelve, was it? Cassandra, by email. Uh, Mr. Brennan has received material by email and that's you know, we're, we're very, very clear that we need materials one week and one day before our meeting dates or hearing dates. And we need it in paper form. And our expert needs it in paper form. That we might be a little old fashioned and that we can review that someday, but right now that's the requirement. And it's not fair to Mr. Brennan or whoever we have as the expert and it's certainly not fair to the board because this isn't our full-time job. We need time to prepare for these hearings and that's why we, we require that everything be submitted a week and a day ahead of time. So. You know, my inclination is that we have this continued until one of our meetings in July. Right now, July is open. We don't have any other things scheduled, but we have two dates set aside, either the tenth or the twenty-sixth. Um, because it's simply, it's, it's simply not fair to us.
I agree, I agree. It's last minute.
We can't review the materials.
Well, yeah, I'm fine with that. Um, I'm sorry about the late submission. There were some changes to the plans. Patrick did a great job, um, following up with us last minute. We thought you would be flexible because the net is that possibly if we could get some feedback tonight, we can make more changes and ultimately maybe have a better plan for you in two weeks. So if you wanted to take a quick glance tonight, we would appreciate that. But if you want to continue, that's fine as well. So it's really up to you.
Well, I, I, I know for myself, I'm in absolutely zero position to comment on anything that you submitted because I, I, you know, I looked at the application early afternoon today and now there's new things that have been submitted that I haven't seen, so I'm not going to be in that position. Um, Amy, go ahead.
Uh, yes, I, I would say that this, uh, particular project has a very extensive body of information that's really important for all of us to understand and to recognize how much work has gone into attempting to create a feasible project. My own personal view is after, I think pa, like page twenty-six um, and, and the diagrams and, and all of the, the history that it is actually on behalf of the applicant that we postpone this meeting. Because we, we all need to look at it very carefully. It's gone through a huge amount of action and there's been a lot of work. And we need to embrace it as we deal with it because it's a complex site.
Yes, that's fine. Uh, whatever you feel comfortable with, I agree with. And, um, so is July tenth enough time for you to review that documentation and would you like a little bit of information in the meantime? Or I, I can supplement more information next week, so I, I have more documents and diagrams as well. Because I think there were some concerns about the cutting. We have a, a history of the cutting frequencies to, to demonstrate that we never exceeded any thresholds for any special permits. So I think, um, that will make you feel comfortable as well and I think we'll work in that direction, uh, to supply even more information based on, uh, current feedback so far.
On behalf of the applicant, the fact that there are these back and forth conversations, I think it's in the, it, the best interest of the project going forward that we basically try to get the picture completely described for us to act because it is, it is a very large document. It's the largest one I've dealt with.
Oh, which one? Which document? The Strongwater?
The entire case is the largest case that we've probably uh, addressed in a very long time.
Well, okay.
That's not a negative. It's that you have done a huge amount of work and we should all be able to read it first so that, from start to finish, so that we feel like we're giving you the best shot.
All right, um. And the other thing is the, the first application, a couple of years ago, we had some valuable input from the fire department. I want to make sure the fire department sees all of this and gives us some input this time as well. Um, Patrick, I, I don't want to put you on the spot and, you know, don't feel obligated, but if Um, Patrick, I, I don't want to put you on the spot and, you know, don't feel obligated, but if you want to share anything that you'd like to see changed. Because I don't want to face this last minute nonsense in two weeks' time. Uh, you know, so if there's anything that. You feel comfortable commenting on from what you received last minute today, feel free.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, no, not this time, I, I've, I've had a lot of back and forth with, uh, Mr. Armond and his team. And, um. That I've pretty much. Given them all the information that they need from me to, to get the plan to where it needs to be, in my opinion.
All right, then, um, unless anybody else in the board has something to add, I will make a motion that we continue this matter to July ten. At six thirty P M.
Second.
Right. All in favor, Tom Callahan, I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Sorry to hear.
Kevin Heine, I.
Okay, and I get, should we have a deep vote on this as well, Cal? We're anticipating that in two weeks we'll have the other two members here.
I mean, it's just a continuance, so there, there's no need, a simple majority vote for our continuance is fine.
All right, great. All right, we'll see you on July tenth and, you know, be cognizant of the fact that there's a holiday next week, I mean. Cassandra, when do you need everything and by Tuesday next week?
May take a peek, um.
Tuesday.
Ideally, Tuesday of next week would be the best. Um, that way I could send out, um, anything to the board members by Wednesday and give them sufficient time to review everything. So if there's any other documents that you need to submit, um, Tuesday. By close of business would be the end.
And, and to Patrick as well by that deadline and if, Patrick, if you need things in hard copies rather than digital, you just let him know that. All right, all right, thank you.
Well, thank you and have a great evening, everybody, take care.
Thank you.
Carolyn, question for you, um, whereas there wasn't really. Much of a discussion, do the board members that were absent need to, uh, fill out a Mullen form?
No, she, you didn't actually open the public hearing, you just continued it to July tenth, so we'll start fresh on July tenth.
Just wanted to double check.
Right, all right, um. Yes, so, but, but the reference to the Mullen hearing is, is if you miss a meeting, you can go back, look at the tape. And still be able to vote, the, the old rule was if you missed a meeting, you were out, no, no, for, no matter what the reason was. And now there's a way to, uh, recover by reading. Or you're seeing a videotape since we're on tape. Um, and speaking of that.
Could you let me know when, when?
Yeah, well, if there's, if there's going to be an opportunity where you missed a meeting, but you're going to be a voting member, you would need to avail yourself of that process, so. To, in order to be able to continue to vote on that. And, and this is something, as was said, we need a super majority, so this requires a four out of five vote, or if there's only four of us, four out of four. Um. Speaking of our meetings, is there any possibilities we head into the new fiscal year of us getting to a live or hybrid setup?
No.
No.
No sentiment for that, I'm sure.
No, there is not.
All right, all right, well, if there's nothing else anybody wants to discuss or have any questions about, you know, Briget, you want to ask questions, feel free. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, thank everybody for.
Can I make just one last little mi, note, which is I want to really thank our chair, Mr. Callahan. For the enormous effort that he has done to this moment to get us halfway through. The change of a bylaw that hasn't been updated for more than thirty years.
Three quarters.
And, and it's.
We're three quarters.
Only his dogged determination that we are arriving at the moment where we actually might. Have a closed and finished new, um, bylaw by, uh, December. So thank you.
Well, I appreciate that and I, I hope that sentiment carries forward because frankly, I was. I'll say it, I was quite upset after our. Section five hearings and that the F A R didn't go forward on this go around. And, uh, I'll be very honest with you, I almost quit on it and, uh. But.
But it's a good thing you didn't, so we got.
And, and, and like I said in my memo. You can, you can oppose the F A R one. And that, that, Briget, that's referring to floor area ratio and the way we measure the size of houses, it's proposing a change. I, I would simply ask, the, the justification is there, it does not need study, it's not rocket science, let the town vote on it. If the town turns it down, then the status quo remains.
Then we have a lot of work ahead of us to get it clear to people what F A R means.
I will, and, uh, you will have an explanation by the end of July at the latest, like, um.
Okay.
In a super busy mode right now, but I'm trying to find time to just write some of this stuff and I got. Family coming to visit, blah, 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 but, uh.
Well, thank you very much on behalf of everyone.
But, uh, yeah, I, I appreciate that and like I said, I, my interest is just seeing the project through. Having the cachet of getting up there at town meeting and just saying I'm the chair, but if it's co-chair, I don't care, you know, I don't need to run these meetings. Uh, you know. Uh, and I certainly. I can assure you that if I'm still just even the sole chair. Right, the day after town meeting, I'm not going to be the chair anymore. Once the, once that's done, I'm done with being the chair and again, whether I stay as a planning board member through next June is a whole nother story, but. It would be nice to maybe have someone appointed who can get their feet wet. You know, before the election rather than electing somebody out of the blue, but. You know, and Briget, you should be aware of the fact that. In, on many of these boards, including our own, Kevin's, Kevin can tell you this, we look at the associates being a full member in training. Uh, so, you know, the, the, the problem with the planning board is we're, and, and I don't know why state law did this, but we're the only ones with five year terms. I mean, it's an extraordinary long commitment for it, uh. I, I got, I got voted in as a write-in at the very last second because nobody. Stepped up for an empty seat because, and it's got to be because of the five year term, it's just thankless and so. Um, anyway, so. All right, uh, we'll adjourn then, I'll, I'll. Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right, I'll second it, all in favor, Tom Kelly and I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
You can vote on this one, Briget.
Amy, vote on this one, okay, I.
First try, it's always hard.
Cassandra and Carolyn, thank you as always, um, and, uh, we'll see you on the tenth. Uh, right now, this is the only application we have according to Cassandra, so we may. Not have our meeting on July twenty sixth, I don't know, how many are we scheduled for in August, just one?
Um. I think it might be two, but let me double check real quick, you have two, you have the fourteenth and the twenty eighth.
Yeah, it's, the, the only thing, you know, even if we have an empty agenda, I might need to take time for bylaw stuff because. Even with a December or November town meeting, they have to pretty much be ready to go mid end of September, so I want to make sure we have enough time to discuss things, but. I first have to see the selectmen and just the select board and get some guidance and direction from them, so I'll, I'll report on that, hopefully by the next meeting. All right, thank you all.
Adios, amiga amigos.
Good night all.
Good night, everyone.